It is six o'clock and I will call the May 13th, 2025 meetings of the Wiff County Board of Supervisors. Not to have Pastor Travis Pauls with the Ole Miss Church. Provide the indication.
Good evening, board. So, I sat there and I was like, I was like, "Lord, give me something to pray about for me tonight." And he gave me this quote. I've become a reader later on in my life. Obviously, when I was younger, I didn't read much at all. So, I've become a reader and Benjamin Franklin quoted this. He said, "I would rather be remembered for being useful than being rich." He had been at the Franklin stove in the late 1700s and he could have patented and could have been one of the richest men in that state. But he said, "I'd rather be remembered for being useful than being rich." That's right. Dear Heavenly Father, I thank you for today, God. I thank you for this time that you give me to pray, Lord. I pray tonight, Lord, that you give wisdom beyond our ears, God, that you guide us with our words, guide us with our thoughts, Lord. I pray that you be with the board tonight and the people that are here, God. Give them the wisdom that they need to help these things move forward in the right way tonight, Lord. We thank you for it, Lord. We bless your holy name. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first item on the agenda is always citizen's time. I'll call you up and you'll have free to speak, Mr. Keith with Keith Towns. The first person we have signed up is Mr. Trey Smith.
I think that after talking with Mr. Bear, I would like to set up a closed meeting with the council if possible. Instead of using this time right here, we talk about some of the issues around West County and the sports, the rent department of the fields. I think it would be best to do that in a closed-door session. So, if that's a commitment I can get from the group, then we won't go any further.
Well, I know it's a closed-door session, but we could have an meeting with a few board members or something like that.
That's a commitment. Okay. But if that's the case, then no further at this time?
I will take Mr. Smith. Earlier today, Mr. Bear did send out an email and we had received the reservation from the Boston Rigs. So, we need to move forward with that part.
Okay. And that's one of the issues I want to touch on, but there's much more that I'd like to go forward with. You know, being a citizen in the community and representing the kids in behalf of and speaking personally on a lot of matters that doesn't involve employers and things of that nature, I think that we need to have that conversation and understand that more. Being a citizen in the community and with the kids from the fields, the baseball, adopting the same road that goes to Angel Park, actively trying to do more. I know I have emails from Ms. Lawson for 2024, 2024 to Mr. Bear with the exact same thing that I posted. The power of social media and having the impact is a lot greater than I think that our board realizes from the stance that I share something that's viewed 3,100 times, right? With multiple comments, you know, the vending solution of getting the fields ready for Saturday, 30 likes, you know, probably to reach a 500 people. So, I just want to be confirmed that there is a large presence of people who want to get behind making sure that our kids have access to good and safe fields, basketball courts, playgrounds in all capacity. But as long as I can give the commitment for the closed-door meet with everyone here on the council, then we will move forward with that.
We don't probably go, we're pretty transparent. We have to meet meetings and we have to meet with, you know, two or three of them. And I'm open to that.
Okay. So, everything's open for the among the board on all the issues that go on? Okay. Is the board aware that a certain board member took a personal issue and contacted the direct property employer?
What do you go on and don't follow their time where you're concerned?
Yeah, so, you know, in that capacity of, you know, a certain citizen, being able to bring 250 jobs for this employer at $28 million worth of investment to try to jeopardize.
That's all Mr. Keith can find.
Thank you.
All right. That's all we have signed up. Citizens' time for next item on the agenda is a public hearing for the VDOT six-year plan. Mr. Bear, I want you to read the resolution or the paper title of the resolution.
Public hearing notice. Virginia Department of Transportation, the Board of Supervisors of Wiff County, in accordance with section 33.2331 in Code of Virginia, will conduct a joint public hearing in the boardroom of the Wiff County Administration Building, 340 South Sixth Street, Wiffville, Virginia, 24382, at 6:05 PM on May 13, 2025. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive public comment on the proposed secondary six-year plan for fiscal years '25 and '26 through 203031 in Wiff County and on the secondary system construction budget for fiscal year 2025 and '26. Copies of the proposed plan and budget may be reviewed in Wiffville residency office of Virginia Department of Transportation, located in 2843 Chapman Room, Wiffville, Virginia, 24382, or in Wiff County offices located in 340 South Sixth Street, Wiffville, Virginia, 24382. All projects in the secondary six-year plans that are eligible for federal funds will be included in the statewide transportation improvement program, which documents how Virginia will obligate federal transportation funds. Persons requiring special assistance to attend and participate in this hearing should contact the Virginia Department of Transportation at 276-228-2154. Persons wishing to stay in the public hearing should contact the Wiff County Board of Supervisors at 223-452-6000.
All right. But that being said, I'll open the public hearing. I'll call you up and since it is a public hearing, you'll have five minutes to speak, Mr. Keith Towns. And the first person to sign up has stated, and I will absolutely not switch these last names. But when you get up, you'll get to the record.
Sure. My name is Ted Willard Canarozzi. That's Canarozzi, C-A-N-N-A-R-O-Z-Z-I.
Thank you, sir.
Sure. I have trouble spelling it too, so. I live at 175 Crawfish Road. Right there, actually, is Crawfish Road begins, when it comes off of Black West where the waterfall is and there used to be a big mill down there and everything. And my family has owned that 35 acres for over 60 years now, 65 years. And unfortunately, we can't often sit outside to enjoy that or open a window because of all the dirt and dust coming off the Crawfish Road. It comes down through the valley and it's just kind of unbearable. And I probably can speak for everybody who's here tonight, who are owners along Crawfish Road, you know, feel the same way. I can speak for everybody. In fact, would you mind if I had everybody who's here to support the improvement of Crawfish Road? Raise your hands just so you, just so the board is aware of that group here who is. You know, the road really wasn't built to accommodate the amount of traffic, delivery trucks, large machinery, you know, and just commuter traffic that comes in and out of that road every day. And, you know, first of all, we appreciate the effort of VDOT for coming out. They actually came out Monday after Elena Gates' call and must have talked to the right person. And, you know, they got out there for this, you know, several mile strip of dirt gravel road and they dumped a couple loads of gravel. Enos, who's here, was out there with a front rotor trying to level it off and get rid of a couple of potholes, you know, help things out. And we appreciate that. We appreciate any effort that you can do. But unfortunately, a lot of that's already washed away after two days because it's just not really, you know, up to par. It, you know, especially in winter, it's downright dangerous to the citizens. A lot of senior citizens, you know, live along that stretch. And really, to the board, we would appreciate any efforts to get us back on this plan that's being proposed and to, you know, pass that along to VDOT, the importance of this. You know, all of these people who are here are property owners, you know, along that stretch. And that's it. That's all I have to say, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Next person we have signed up is Mr. Eric Hammond.
Most of y'all know me and I love to live in West County. And I've had a farm on Black Lake for over 50 years. Worked one time to get it on the five-year plan. And when the five years was up, nothing happened. Now, I'm back again to ask you to see what you can do about fixing the road. It needs to be widened, ditches, and we'd like to see a little blacktop on. I mean, it needs. And the first thing you need to do is get some water off the road. The next thing, we appreciate you, Mr. Hammond. But anyway, I don't know why that they changed it. The last time I had that, I didn't get a notice or anything. It said, "We're not going to do it this year." And these people here are wanting to get started and that was. That made me happy to have somebody that wanted to get involved in it. And we think that you all can really help us if you could, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric Hammond. All right. Next person we have signed up is Mr. Craig Hammond.
Good evening. I'm Craig Hammond. I'm a newcomer to West County. I live in Lake Spring, Virginia. I'm a landowner, just bought a farm on Crawfish Road. And the last couple of years, I bought a couple of farms over on Rushmore. So, I own some land in Washington and Smith County and a bit in the taxpayer down there also. But Crawfish is a beautiful place. And I agree with the first gentleman came up. It's a dusty place. And, you know, like, when we bought the farm there and started coming in and out and doing all the tree work and doing all hurricane damage and the road offices in a terrible mess. Back then, it was really bad. There was getting ruts in the road. So, obviously, there is a major problem there with the dust and the mud and, you know, the water is a problem. You know, all the floods and rains last night, I mean, the water in front of Mr. Yates' house was knee-deep. So, obviously, there's a problem. You know, this is modern times. I know money's hard to come by, but there's, in the year 2025, citizens shouldn't have to travel through roads in that condition of their homes and their pockets. Most everybody drives a car, this base costs $50,000 to $100,000. So, that's my concern. I know y'all do what you can. Appreciate what you have done and what you continue to do. And I'm proud to be an owner in West County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hammond. All right. That's all we had signed up for citizens' time or public hearing. So, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Bear, the email that you sent this afternoon is probably, in my going on eight years on this board, is probably the most hopeful that I've seen of Crawfish Road. If you want to summarize that.
I can, if you would like Mr. Schwartz to summarize that, I would want to do it. Come over here.
Good evening. So, with the concern from Crawfish and I guess Steven contacted the office. They had our folks come out. I think someone mentioned that they saw us out last week. But I think in the past, we've had some concerns with Crawfish that it's a little narrow as you started. However, obviously, there's a lot of concern for the road. So, we took a little deeper look at it. And so, we broke it up into a couple, two sections. It's not the entire road. I think our office or our records indicate that the road's 5.7 miles long. So, we broke it up into two sections. The first one would be from around 68 to 0.80 miles, which I think gets you down to the bridge, maybe where the Yates live. That section, where it's so narrow, it would include quite a bit of fence relocation, some cut slope grading and probably some environmental management that we may have to actually put some structures on this piece of property. Which, so, this would all be contingent upon property owners agreeing to get us access to it. That estimate that we came up with for that section would be $333,121. The second section would take off from that 280 miles and go a distance of 1.3 miles. Kind of get you past most of the residences or the homes. I think, I mean, just looking at it on a map, it looks like it's still kind of a wooded area, if you will. That section would be relatively easy to build. We may have to get on some properties, but I think it's minor. And that estimate would be $310,345. Obviously, these estimates are surface treatment, which is pawn shit. Not as tall.
I'm pretty sure that you have.
Yeah, yeah. It's going to get you out of mind.
I've been on it, yes.
Yeah, on the dust, so, I mean, it's definitely.
Well, let me ask you a question. And, you know, I recommend the racetrack road, which we advertised. And the one person that, you know, reached out to me who's been several years in the road and asked to get that bit of something a week ago, "Hey, thanks a lot for the road payment. They paved it right by my house." Now, was that VDOT that paved that road or was that? Because I know Mr. Brown in the racetrack was doing some improvements.
So, we also, so, I guess the three contractors were here for the hurricane damage road. So, we came in and also went ahead and resurfaced it. Unfortunately, the racetrack was already, I mean, that was already done. So, we went ahead and did that as well because we felt like it was in bad enough shape, we probably should just go ahead and do it all at once. So, we didn't have those calls saying, "Why didn't you do my section?" So, I mean.
And here's my question is, based on what I'm looking at, we've got $216,279 listed for racetrack. But if we move that, and what can we do on Crawfish Road? Because, I mean, honestly, you know, some of these people, I don't recall Eric Joe out, but he's lived there a long time. And, you know, and every year, almost every year, I've been, we've tried to get some resolution. So, you know, as the supervisor for that district, I have no problem because, you know, the one person that, you know, I talked to in the racetrack road that didn't qualify its time said, "Hey, you know, they paved it up past my road, it pays a lot."
So, Schwartz, couldn't we do just like what we talked before? That if, I mean, this public hearing, we typically put roads in here, but we talked about we can have put roads in here. If they sort of decided that they did not want to proceed with the road and put that in there, that will basically be two-thirds of the funding and then come back next year and put the other third of the funding in there like we had talked about with some of the other roads? Would that be feasible?
Yes, I think so. So, it essentially would be, I don't know how we did last year's. We can have one road that's not fully funded on the front end. So, we could basically pay the $216,000, put it on Crawfish, and then a map is not going to be here at this age. However, so whatever is left.
Go for it.
Right. So, whatever is left, the next year, we would have to fund it right off the top from the next year's allocation.
Did you say the portions were $336,000?
I would just do the first section. So, that's the first section we take care of. The main, that would be something like you would be committed to with this.
Okay, so, okay. So, you're saying that would be?
Not that the rest is not critical, but my suspicion is to be over there. You can only commit one road and then unfinished. But that would take care of what I consider to be, there's some drainage issues on the rest of it. But that hillside and that there pothole coming in, run some of the worst stuff.
But I mean, you know, my thing is, at least we can get them on the map. And now I'm not going to be here next year, so everybody, everybody, y'all, will have to come back.
Mr. Chairman, you've had your public hearing, that's required. You've got draft plan here and you've got draft, if you would like to consent to that change, you don't have to vote on this today. We could, you could ask Mr. Schwartz to come back, take racetrack off, add the other road onto it and bring it.
I mean, that would be my recommendation from my seat, my business. Like I said, I've got somebody that I talked to for a few years that's satisfied. I've got a lot of people that I've talked to over seven years that, you know, weren't satisfied. And we didn't see a resolution until here recently, now we've got a resolution. That would be my recommendation. But, I mean, you know, the thing about it is, like I said, I'm not going to be here next year. So, everybody in Crawfish should gain, you know, you're going to have to reach out to the board supervisors and the district that are, say, "Hey, each quarter is, you know, we think." And that's basically where that makes sense. That's my recommendation. I mean, I'm good with this. I'm ready to begin this. We've done that by, you know, go through.
There's several that have been done in sections.
You don't not know that. So, do we need to take any action on the six-year plan?
And my opinion is you do not have to take any actions tonight. We'll put those new numbers in and take off the racetrack resolution and come back with the other resolution. If that, if that's the way you recommend, oh, no.
I can say yes.
As long as all of you are fine, unless you all feel like you all need to make a motion directly to do that, as far as consensus on the board, I think we're fine.
I'm just excited to actually have you. But I'll do that.
But you got to come back next year.
Okay, we'll be here.
All right. Anything else for VDOT six-year plan, Mr. Bear? Uh, no, sir. All right. Move on to the things that get horses, six-four member has received Dino's horse package. Popping ten horses for three, two pages. Oh, yeah, I didn't give y'all the thing. Y'all believe in the government, so.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Did you really invite Mr. Jones? I'm not seeing next year.
Yes, I think we look forward to it.
I won't take bits because they're not funny.
Thank you all.
All right. Continuing on, each board member has received a nerd for the pack of Dino's horses next week. But that being said, I want to make a motion to pay him. So, you have a motion by Mr. Terry, a second number for Cook. Is there any head voice, any member who wants to pull out and discuss? Right. Hearing that, we will call both Ms. Lawson and the board. So, for. Next item on our agenda is the minutes of our previous meeting from April 42, 2025. I'll entertain a motion of thirty minutes. Have a motion by Mr. Cook, who has a second. Have a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Hearing none, all of you's a favor, signify to say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Move on to whole business. We have a Wiffville Community College Board appointment. Mr. Bear has sent out an email earlier than that. Mr. Bear, we're going to talk about.
Shared that with you all. I think it would be a good appointment, but just send it out to you all, see if you all interested.
I spoke to Mr. Bear. I thought Mr. Lewis would be a good appointment. I think with a passion, so.
She's been on Rock Hughes and some other things. She was with Lightpoint Hospital. She went to another hospital for a while and then came back to area and said she would be excited to say back on.
So, with that being said, I'll, before anybody makes a motion to appoint Mr. Curtis Diggs to the Wiffville Community College. Have a motion by Mr. Cook, the second by Mr. Morgan. Is there any question or discussion? All right. Hearing none, we will call Mr. Cherry. So, approve. Congratulations.
Say a thank you to Biden.
Anything else for whole business, Mr. Bear?
Uh, no, sir.
All right. Move on to new business. We have a erosion of settlement patrol orders that we set up a hearing for.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Kanser has been working on this and we request that you all set a public hearing. Martha, we talked about, I think, June 10th meeting would be best. We've got several public hearings already scheduled for May 27th. So, if you all don't mind, somebody for June 10th meeting.
All right. I want you to set a public hearing on June 10th. For a public hearing about erosion of settlement patrol. So, have a motion by Mr. Cherry, who has a second. Have a second. Mr. Morgan, any question or discussion on that? I want to do one called Ms. Lawson. So, approve. Next item we have is a motion for law, Mr. Brown, Mr. Bear.
Yeah, Chief Deputy Vaughn has sent me this the other day. I'd ask you all, accept the grant and manage appropriate $3,200. So, 31021413300, old time.
All right. We've got a request here in the line item. I'll entertain a motion to approve the candidate's recommendation. Have a motion by Mr. Smith, who has a second. Second by Mr. Cherry. Is there any question or discussion on that? Right. Hearing none, we will call Mr. Cherry. I'll say aye. So, approve. And next, everybody's thinking, thinking, talking about, we have our proposed tax rates.
Mr. Chairman, what we're presenting for you is proposed tax rates for FY '25, '26, as we've discussed in our budget deliberations and work sessions. No tax increases proposed for the upcoming year. Real estate remaining $0.51, personal property at $2.22, machinery and tools at $1.50, and merchants' capital $0.56. And I will request that board supervisors authorize advertising rates for a public hearing on May 27, 2025.
All right. Hearing Mr. Bear's request, I'll entertain a motion to advertise a public hearing. Have a motion by Ms. Lawson, who has a second. Have a second by Mr. Morgan. Any questions or, excuse me, any question with special? All right. Hearing none, all of you's a favor, signify to say aye. All right, here and now, all of these papers, suit of type, sending out. So, pretty. Next, we have our history year twenty-six budget rate, a motion with Mr. Barr.
Yes, sir, Ms. Chairman, I will request that you all authorize staff to advertise the recommended revenue and expenditure budget of one hundred and seventeen million, six hundred and seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars, along with school board budget on the same day, May twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five.
All right, you heard the request, I'll entertain a motion to have a public hearing. Second, have a motion by Mr. Smith, who had a second, by Mr. Terry. Any questions or discussion? All right, here and now, I will do the papers, suit of type, sending out. Any opposed? So, pretty. Anything else under the review business?
I do not have anything unless the item you have, you can come up. I do not think the sheriff.
Well, we need to quickly, are you talking about what was already set up?
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah. And it doesn't have to be done with the next meeting, if you want to do it however you want to.
You do it the next meeting, did you know?
He's playing on the, 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 the pressure, so. I mean, it's, it's, it's.
Yeah.
Sure, Foster announced today that after thirty-eight years, he'll be retiring August first, which will, which means that we have the request of a special election for this November, we remain firm. So that's what's been discussed. I've got Whitfield Resolution twenty twenty-five, national team, knowledge of the retirement of Charles, with the sheriff of Whitfield County. And the resolution requesting full of a special election, in all reading of the record. Whereas Charles W. Foster was duly elected to serve as Whitfield County Sheriff, whereas before May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, Sheriff Foster announced his retirement effective August first, twenty twenty-five. And whereas the Whitfield County Board of Supervisors wished to graduate Sheriff Foster on his years of service and wish him well as a leader upon his board and chapter of this law. Now therefore, being resolved, vacancies exist in all offices of Whitfield County Sheriff, but must be filled to remain in experience permanent. And being pardoned, his county attorney is hereby authorized to direct to notify the Southern Court of Whitfield County, that it's against petition, according to issue of writ, a special election, the question to be held on the move before twenty twenty-five, to fill the vacancy in the office of Whitfield County Sheriff, as provided by law. But that being said, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five, national team. Have a motion by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Terry. Any questions or discussion on that? All right, here and now, we will call, but Ms. Lawson. I'll say. So, pretty. Stan, anything else?
Uh, no, sir, Ms. Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Grant. Two of those born at Forts, have a building in grounds, community of the county. And also that on history, I think it's industry. Building grounds committee been on May seventh, twenty twenty-five, and has following recommendations. One, approve the lease agreement with Outboys and Power Company to maximize amount of trash and recycling. All right, committee says a second. Is there any questions or discussion on that recommendation? All right, here and now, we will call, but Mr. Terry. So, pretty. Second, the Warren Whitfield County Circuit Court, roof recovery phase, boom project, to John T. Martin, we're getting a email. Again, committee, the second, is there any discussion or questions on that recommendation? All right, here and now, we will call, but Ms. Lawson. On three, approve the transfer, forty-five hundred dollars. The building and ground maintenance, four, three, zero, four, eight, that's four, five, three, zero, two, zero. The building and ground maintenance building, four, three, zero, five, zero, that's four, six, two, zero, one, zero. All right, any questions or discussion on that recommendation? Here and now, Mr. Terry. Item four, approve contract change orders in Royal Creek Lake restroom renovation, which adds three thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars to the end system contract amount. Any questions or discussion on that? Ms. Lawson? So, pretty. Item five, issue supplemental payment to Children's Trucking in the amount of eight thousand dollars for excessive trash collection followed her campaign. Again, committee, the second, any questions or discussion on that? Here and now, Mr. Terry. So, pretty. That is it, Mr. Terry.
If I might, just one item that's come up, that we may authorize a change order by staff and bring to you at the next meeting. The Royal Creek bathroom project is getting finished up. Our engineer did a good job of designing those plans and everything, but engineer is not an architect. That's following things on some items, so outside painting of the facility, after they were done, is not included with it. So we've got a change order from them, and Landis also looking at the availability of them themselves. So we'll either get a painter ourselves, or maybe it's a change order, or if we're paying, that's pretty much it.
Is that both of them?
All four of them, all three bathrooms, well, all three little bathrooms, the main primitive bathroom.
All right.
Uh, no, thank you.
All right, we're going to the board committee.
Board committee man on May sixth, two thousand twenty-five, and make the following recommendations. Item number one, authorize friendly mountain sale of surplus, item number fire department ton truck.
All right, again, committee, the second, is there any questions or discussion on that recommendation? All right, here and now, Ms. Lawson.
I'll write the statements of the United Way of Southwest Virginia Lane Disaster Relief Funds, as stated on provided limits.
Again, committee, the second, any questions or discussion on that recommendation? Here and now, we will call, but Mr. Terry.
I'm in an appropriate, four hundred and twenty-six thousand, one hundred and sixty-four dollars for the revenue, two zero 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 three, that's three two seven six one two. Expense, six one zero one, that's six one zero one oh two, to the Health Life Point by School Board budget, to replace the state fund, the state approved SOQ bonds.
Again, committee, the second, is there any questions or discussion? Here and now, we will call, but Ms. Lawson. Since I don't really, I'm not in a, in a SOQ position, I'll say. So, pretty.
Approve the audit contract review from Robinson Farmer and Coffescent.
Again, committee, the second, any questions or discussion? And then, Mr. Terry.
Approve the audit agreement from Robinson Farmer and Coffescent for Health Life Point by Services.
Any questions or discussion on that recommendation? All right, we will call, but Ms. Lawson. So, add a thousand, twenty, tenth, two thousand twenty-five public hearing for employee bonus awards. Any questions or discussion on that? But, Mr. Terry.
Adopt the emergency services agreement, I'm in number one, and we amend an appropriate eight hundred thousand dollars to account three two zero six, that's four six one four zero zero.
Any questions or discussion on that? All right, we will call, but Ms. Lawson.
Transfer seventy-one thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars, sixteen cents of VOS, ARPA funds, account seven hundred, that's two six zero six three zero, the general fund, one zero zero, that's one zero one thousand.
Any questions or discussion on that? All right, Mr. Terry.
I'm in an appropriate eight, three, three thousand, one hundred and five dollars to the department, three one zero two nine, as stated on provided below. These are out, these salary expenses from July twenty-four, in the change, in, you know, change of the sheriff to the county out of the.
All right, any questions or discussion on that? All right, Mr. Terry.
I'm in an appropriate seven hundred and thirty-one dollars and sixty-five cents to the animal control, account three five zero one, that's four three zero one five.
Any questions or discussion on that? But, Ms. Lawson.
Approve the longest health insurance contribution grain, as provided.
Any questions on that? All right, Mr. Terry. I remember that long. I'll take that on my. All right, we're going to board supervisor, time, Ms. Lawson.
I have a complaint about some paving, I've talked to Mr. Schwartz today. He said they haven't finished it yet, so we won't be right now, they're going to work on it. I love these signs, the recordings, thank you, Ms. Schwartz, for designing the logo, I think they look awesome. Thanks for mentioning things in here and helping me with it, I really appreciate it. That's all I have.
Mr. Coop.
Mr. Smith. Mr. Brown, I've talked, I've seen Mr. Schwartz's response back, was that issue on Hardfield Heights, about the drain, system there, and we would concede when the easement was put into place, I think you're kind of getting a lot on your own around there. About the drain might have been too far away from where they would have put it. The easement system, if they didn't install. That's all.
All right, Mr. Morgan. Getting a lot of complaints about tire road. We will look down out there. Also heard from Mr. Richard Lepa, upon Isle Road North. They want to get one of those special text registers set up. Mr. Terry.
I think I have Mr. Shannon, just on the state of the huge state for the service of Sheriff Charles Lawson. Thank you for your job well done. That's all I've got, sir.
The only thing I've got, well, I had a call today about an issue on all persons label, which is a surprise to me, to Mr. Barr, his colleagues, sort of, got some call, and we'll look at it and see if there's anything we can do. But I appreciate the little schools on the crawfish road. I hate that the folks live, and like I said, I won't be here next year, hopefully they come back. It's just been a long time. And the crawfish, throw the, the, the tented little houses on crawfish road, and now, we've got some, I guess I'll call industrial farms, we don't have, we don't have Harry Joe lakes falling, we've got some big tractors, big, we've done down there. And people have good houses down there, you know. It's also a recreational area, a big little high, it's a traffic, you know, has it, please. So I would ask the board members that are going to be here, Ms. Lawson, west of, you know, just, just remember that, and then try to help folks out when they can. It's a great place to go, but I actually hate to go because your vehicles, absolutely filthy, and due to the increased traffic, even when B-Dot comes out and, you know, they do spread, does control the corner, whatever, they use. You know, the last about week. So, you know, the main thing is that we have to be here next year, just, just remember that. I think we've always wanted to get this part of the groups to try to address some of the natural check in the van. And that's all I've got.
Ms. Chairman, if I might, on Mr. Morgan's comment, I also had a call from another supervisor this week about drive road, and reached out to B-Dot. They're supposed to be working on the potholes, especially on the cruder road, near the intersection, working on those. But I will go ahead and reiterate to them tomorrow, that you had to send us.
All right, Mr. Barr, you have anything else?
No, sir.
No, sir. It was fairly quiet.
It's, it's, it's almost bright. We're holding it back, we've got some good news for, for the next meeting. We've received several requests, but we can't announce them yet, or ask for your approval until the state announces. So Ms. Williams has done really good work, I give her credit, for doing that, but we're.
I'm just saying, since you've worked here, this is as far as you've ever been in the nation.
I'll try to do better next time.
Mr. Farley, you have anything?
I do, I do not, thank you.
This college, you have anything? All right, here and now, the other thing, we turn.